Call this meeting of the Baccay County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Leland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Delka?
Here.
White?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I believe, Mr. Burke, you had a comment on the agenda?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Yesterday, the agenda notice was sent out scheduling the start time for 11:00 a.m., 11:30 a.m. And this came to the attention of the staff at around 1 o'clock, and they contacted me. And I told them that because of the chaos going on and the emergency nature of this hearing and the fact of this coronavirus issue, that we should proceed with the agenda, which should correctly and does correctly state that in a scheduled 4:00 a.m., there was a subsequent agenda notice that was sent out. So I have recommended that the board proceed with the 9:00 a.m. start time as you're doing.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, do we have a motion on the agenda?
Moved.
Second.
So moved and second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Agenda is approved. Now, as a work session, discussion, possible action related to county preparedness for COVID-19. So I believe, I know of a couple of issues to address today that came up yesterday. One was the question of health screenings for folks coming in. I believe that it is the opinion or the advisement of HR that that would not be legal to be doing health screenings of employees as they come in. So that's something that we're not going to be able to implement at this time, I believe. There is a, so I don't think we need to take action on that. It's a question of parking lot. So I think in this time, we just, the parking lot's open, folks.
I agree.
Just parking it.
Just make sure that securities or Rory that would just put a deposit.
Yeah, they stopped it yesterday. They weren't going out yesterday.
Yeah.
If I could make a quick comment on that. Also, I've had some questions about the side door and whether or not, do we want to continue to funnel employees through the guards? Or do we want to open up the side door to bypass the guards?
We got guards there. They should come through that front door, employee or no employee.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a secured door down there. You want to keep it secured.
Yep. It was just a question that came to me.
And we'll just, departments, can you advise yourself if for some reason, we don't expect it, but there ends up being a line at the door, just practice good social distancing as you're in that line. Waiting outside a little bit won't hurt us here. So spread out six feet apart if you do have to wait in line. I know there's a question about our own board office staff. I would think that a good amount of their work could be done from home, but we should have a discussion and decision as a board on that.
My concern of it is, we do have people working in all the departments.
Mm-hmm.
They call them essential. James, I think, is one of those. He's also the EOC treasurer. And I don't know if everybody knew that. That should have came to the board for both. And Dana provides the agenda and also does some other work. Neither one of them would be involved with the public because we've got to close down, and they both work far enough apart from each other. My biggest concern is if, say, we were to have Dana go home and then come in to do the agenda, she could expose us, you know, being out in the mix. So I'd be honest with you. I think, short term here, we should probably keep both of them in the boardroom and go from there and maybe reassess it in two weeks or after that 14-day period that was approved yesterday.
Any others have thoughts on this?
In regards to the finance officer, I believe he should be able to come and go as he needs to because of the situation. He has a pregnant wife, and I don't want to see him be in here and catch it and expose his wife to something.
Okay.
The littler time he's in here, they can get a hold of him at home if they have to. We can appoint a different EOC finance officer.
Well, then, you should notify EOC if he's not going to be doing that. My only concern is coming back and forth all the time is you're more vulnerable to bring something back in.
What are you doing every day? You're coming back and forth.
Well, I understand it, but when you're actually off, they're not going to be staying home. Don't kid yourself one bit. So.
Everybody I know that's locking down is locking down. I stopped at my buddy's house, and he says he didn't want me to come in because he's susceptible. You know, his immune system's way down.
All you gotta do is watch TV, and you'll see how many are locked down. They're all over the place. Anyway, that's my opinion that we should keep them at least for 14 days.
I'm inclined to have them work from home as much as possible. I'd like to hear others as well.
Well, I, you know, my biggest concern with this whole situation is those who are able to spread the virus without showing symptoms at all. So, you know, I've been preaching it out for days. I do advocate working from home if that's possible, and the social distancing is huge. Grant sent out an email this morning, and so I support allowing them to work from home.
I'm kind of torn on that a little bit, I guess, because I do see what we do in the board office as essential services. And sometimes we're in the direct line of contact when people do reach out, whether it's an issue in other departments or not. And so reaching us or contact with us as well as the notifications and some of the things we need to get out immediately, I think, are very important. The social distancing, I think, is something that we all should be doing a better job of. And thank you, Grant, for recommending us be more aware of that. But I was thinking, as far as isolating us, and we all have, I think, some distance that we can put between us, obviously, in our offices, but even James, maybe there's a way they could alternate being in the office or something that keeps the office open full-time and keeps operations for us. I think we need a direct line for all of us for some contact as well. But asking them to, with our help or on their own, I guess, to try to come up with a schedule that works, that we do keep people in the office or someone in the office at all times, so that we are available to the public, whether it's calls or our staff or whatever, so that we get that notice.
Over the years, I've kind of seen that administrative aid position as a resource towards myself as operating as a supervisor, getting stuff, researching things that we need, taking calls that come in that, you know, I know we're all out there, but she still gets a number of calls. So to me, that position is a valuable resource, even more so now, the condition we're in. I mean, you've got a lot of departments here like Grant's. They got people in there, and they're needed. And I think with the county being shut down and no public coming in, that makes our employees a little bit safer, at least when they're here. But anyway.
Right. Is, I know a question had come up about whether these phones can be rerouted to.
Yeah, I was just going to say, they do have an option to do a call forwarding. Some of our guys have actually done that to their extensions. So that is an option on the phones to have them forwarded to their cell phones.
But you know, also, Board, I have concern with Rory's department. The county's got a lot of buildings, and there's a lot of maintenance, and he sent all four home. And again, don't kid yourself one bit. They're not going to sit in the house all day. They're going to be out and around, and potentially, Rory's going to call one or two back, working either in one of these departments here or over to jail, and who knows what they're bringing back in with them. So I see that as a problem, too, that he got four of them out because they're not going to be staying in the house. They're going to be moving around, and if they have to come back and do some mackening. Plus the fact, the reason we went from two to four is because we had a lot of wrenching to do. And I think that was kind of a mistake, too, sending all them home.
I believe that our employees are going to take this seriously and understand the seriousness of the action that we took yesterday. And I have good faith in them that they are, if they're given the opportunity, that they're going to be staying home during this as much as possible.
Well, it wasn't that so much that my concern is. It's that we are providing the essential services. I do see building maintenance as an essential service, you know, especially at this time. That doesn't mean I think everybody should be congregating and meeting or working together and that type of thing, but.
Yeah. And what we did is, based off our meeting yesterday, we're trying to minimize as much interaction as possibly, as possible. All of our guys are on call. We have two people monitoring work orders and emails as they come in, so we're going to look at those, and we're going to determine if it's worthy of addressing. So if it's a temperature change, that might not be worthy of taking a chance and having somebody interacting with another person. If it's a water leak or emergency, then absolutely, they're all on call. And we'll bring one person in. We won't double them up. We're not going to be doing projects that require a group of them to work together. We're just trying to minimize the interaction as much as possible.
I'd say, I personally, I trust your judgment on that and your plan, and our decision yesterday was to empower department heads and elected officials to make a decision. And so I feel comfortable that if we need them here, they're going to be here.
Yeah. And I get what you're saying, Tom, and I sure hope that they understand the reason that this decision was made is so they can be home with their families and not out and about. There's, you know, I can only hope that that's the case.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not at all criticizing our employees or insulating anything. Common sense is going to tell you, they are not going to stay home, and they're in that younger age group also. So that's fine, but they're going to come back into this building. And personally, if James or Dana comes back into that office, I want to keep as far away as I can because I don't know where they go. Nobody monitors them. So.
Well, we do need to make a decision on our own board staff. I think with.
How can we do that? I was going to say to be better prepared, I guess, from, I'm thinking from a notification standpoint, when somebody needs to get us, because there are five and it's difficult. It's different if you have a mayor or someone like that, too. And I said, and because we are all collectively responsible, and it isn't just one individual. But I said, that's how we receive notification and that type of thing, I think, is important, whether it's from our staff. I know some of them, when it's email or phone calls, they can collectively call each one of us, but it would be a, I don't know, just from a communication standpoint and how important communication seems to be during these times right now.
I just know that over time, Dana's had a lot of, when she's gone on vacation or off, she's got a lot of phone calls and messages that pertain to something to the county. And you would think if she didn't answer or change her phone message, they would call one of us, James, but they don't. And so therefore, the board doesn't get that information until a week later when she comes back.
Well, I wondered that about the notice that even we put out yesterday, and we put out the courthouse notice, not the supervisor's phone number. It has the courthouse number, that 3,000 rather than 3,003. And I thought, how do we then, you know, receive those calls? Because that's, sometimes we're in that direct line that people want us or want our attention, or sometimes they don't need us, but that's what they want.
I think the Board of Supervisors' email is coming to us now, right? We're getting those?
Yeah, I think.
Because at one time, they went to administrative aid, and they didn't come to us. They sat there if she was gone. So I think we're getting those. The phone calls, probably have figured something out with the phone calls if we're going to let her go, because I guarantee you, they're going to pile up and.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I was just going, I think with the technology and the ability to forward those calls, that we can solve that, our problem. Email can still function.
To us, individually, the calls, or you were thinking?
No, the calls would be forwarded to Dana still, to her cellphone. I've always, my practice, my own voicemail recording is always giving my cellphone out.
Mine, too.
To the public. And I think, so I think the public mostly has access to our cell phones as well.
But I think if we're going to do it that way, I'd just assume that phone be routed to the board because it could be some resource she needs. She can't have it at home. So she'd have to come in to do it. So you've got five supervisors. Can you route it? I don't know. Are you planning to keep him one in the boardroom? Or are you going to let them both go at the same time?
Well, that's, I think that's up for discussion right now of.
What are our thoughts of keeping alternating a person? I mean, I know, Tom, you mentioned somebody coming in and out, but I just thought to have one person there and not the other. I don't.
You know, I think a motion that included forwarding the calls, maybe forwarding, if the calls come into our phone, forward it to our cellphone. I'm sure that can be arranged easily. James forwarding to his cellphone, Dana forwarding to her, with an expectation and it be explicitly clear between the hours of 8:00 and 4:30. If we have an inquiry or anybody has an inquiry, we expect a prompt response, say, within an hour of any inquiry.
Yeah.
Or we could have access to that phone at the administrative aid and just float it for the first week. Chris will check those calls. Second week, Linda, third time. You know, see what I'm saying? So we're monitoring that phone, too, just like you monitor your own phone when you're outside. So we could do that, too, can't we?
Yeah. I mean, my one concern is that we get, you know, when you're in the office and it doesn't pick up, we're getting all sorts of calls that aren't related to our work just because of how they get routed. So I don't, I don't want my phone blowing up with stuff that I don't need to be paying attention to right now. I think that would happen before that. So I think that number is still forwarded to Dana, and it'll be her job to be sorting through.
Because I'd say half the calls probably are for, or it's.
Yeah, absolutely. It's.
So it'll be her responsibility to triage the calls.
We'll forward them to the judge.
And then, yeah. And then contact us, I guess, if there's any that need attention.
And we're all easily accessible. Tom, you are fast on the email. So.
Fast on the phone. He's really fast.
But I can agree with what the Board of Supervisors, I mean, I just wanted to give you my point.
Oh, absolutely.
I do know that if they go out, I'm going to stay away from both of them.
So much for the budget.
Yeah.
And so, so do we want to make a motion on this?
I don't think we need to, Chris. If we get a consensus, that's all I.
Yeah. And at any time, I guess, after two weeks or sooner, if we find something's not working right, we know each other.
I know one other thing that, or do we have anything more to discuss on how this will work? We feel good here?
I've got one thing.
Just for, to make sure I get it straight in a minute, let me ask you if I got it right. So you are going to have the phone calls that come into the Board of Supervisors' number be routed to Dana's cellphone, correct? And are you going to have, are you going to try to have the office staff by either James or Dana at all times during work hours?
I think with the routing of the phones, I don't think that's necessary.
Okay. How are you going to do the agenda?
At this point, yeah. Some of those things that have to be done.
So, yeah. And Dana mentioned that there would still be some things, like sometimes bills that need to be paid that she would come in to do. But so is, but just limiting the amount of time that's here as much as necessary. And so agendas would still have to be posted.
I assume that's what you're thinking, too, James, too, as if there is something you need to come in and address. So, and just keep our distance. Thank you.
So everybody clear? Okay. Tom, you've got something?
Yeah. We have to make a decision. P and Z across the streets asking for the board to make a decision on if we want to, Pete, you might want to weigh in on this, whether we want to halt taking any applications for a zoning change for X amount of time because they did cancel a meeting for them the other day, but they didn't have a quorum. But he said they'll have one next month because they got a lot of stuff that built up. But they're waiting for a direction from us. Legally, can we kind of say the county's not accepting any zoning applications for 30 days and then reassess it then, or?
Yeah, you can. You could put a moratorium in there.
Okay. They're looking for a direction for us. So I guess the board needs to decide how long, and then we'll take another look at it. That way, our P and Z board won't be meeting. Board of Adjustment wouldn't meet either because they feed off of that one. So.
When would their next meeting be?
It's going to be, it'll be in April.
Okay. So.
Currently, there's no applications, but they could come in today. So they just need direction from us.
Sort of 30-day moratorium on it until April, whatever.
Right. That works for me.
And then, at the end of 30 days, look at it again.
Yep. Would someone like to make that motion?
I just said.
All right. You got a second?
Second.
Okay.
All right. So the motion is a 30-day moratorium on planning and zoning applications.
James, you want to contact them today after the meeting, Eric, and tell him that no applications for 30 days?
It's been moved and second. Do we want a roll call on that, Mr. Veder? Or do we want?
That's fine.
All right. Let's listen to a voice vote. All in favor of the motion to suspend planning and zoning applications for 30 days and be reexamined as we approach that 30-day deadline?
Aye.
Aye.
All aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
I was telling Chris, I was at the meeting yesterday for mental health, and suggesting was, I suggested that any thing that a county's doing that they think some other county might be able to use, an idea, to share it with the other counties. So I'm looking forward to some ideas. I told Dan this morning, one of the ideas, well, I told Chris, too, one of the ideas that come out was checking on your neighbors, the neighbors around you, especially if you've got somebody elderly in the area, you know, that they can't get out to get their meds or whatever. Be kind enough to go over and check on them. I did my neighborhood, and I realized at the last minute, me and Diane's the oldest one in the neighborhood. Hopefully, everybody.
I think.
Shut that idea.
I think it was.
Yeah. I've been checking on Grant.
You could, you could knock on my door. You know, the living you could take care of.
I was joking with Craig earlier this morning. It's that moment when you realize you are the senior citizen. But I think, I think maybe, you know, our employees are some of the best stewards and members of this community. I think maybe a memo sent out to folks just to remind them that during this time to, you know, engaging in that kind of stuff, to if you know you've got elderly and vulnerable neighbors, check in with them and see what you can do to help. One thing, and this is, there's a lot more pieces to think through on this, is to, I've seen a couple of my colleague counties, none in Iowa so far. Last I saw was Kalamazoo County in Michigan. And they are locally doing some sort of local economic stimulus package targeted for small businesses and nonprofits that might be struggling at this time. And so I've only talked to a handful of small business owners to see if, you know, if the board would do some kind of project, like say, we said $100,000 available for grants for nonprofits and small businesses as some bridge money that we can get out quicker than the federal government would get it out. And their opinion is that that would be really helpful if this is something that goes on for a month. If this is something that goes on for three months and stuff, then that amount, you know, it is no longer make or break amount. But in the short term, that might be something that we could consider more and maybe discuss more at our meetings next week. But, and I'll talk to my colleagues and, or our colleagues from Kalamazoo to see exactly what's included in their package that they did.
You said $100,000?
Theirs was $250,000. So I was just kind of thinking of scaling it down to what our county size was. And so as, you know, if we helped out a, you know, $100, $1,000 quick disbursement, grants to small businesses and nonprofits, that might be what helps them make rent this coming month.
Oh, I understand the rationale behind it. Boy, I just don't know where we go.
Yep.
Yeah, and select.
I think that needs a little bit more thinking.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So that's why I'm just putting it out there today for us all to think about.
You know how hard it is to decide on agency?
Yes, yeah.
I'd be curious to see your proposal, because I could see the details.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
With that, does anyone else from the board have something? Or anyone else? Yes.
Thank you. Just with regard to, so yesterday, we did the 14-day leave. Let me, because I just am home, being on essential or could work from home. Okay, now, for people who aren't working, they're being paid leave. I have had some questions as well, and we don't have this yet, but eventually, we'll probably have somebody who maybe has a sick family member or maybe they're, you know, on a 14-day quarantine. We talked a little bit about, you know, mentioned it yesterday. Are we trying to be, like, telling people they have to use their sick time or can you do the COVID sick code?
So I believe there is some federal legislation that may get passed on this, and so I'd rather get ahead of that. And what that federal legislation would be, would be mandatory paid sick leave for COVID specifically. And that does not take away from what they already have. And so I'd like to see us go in that direction because it sounds like the federal government might go that direction anyways.
I think that would ease a lot of fears because there are most of the worries. Some people haven't been here on, don't have any sick time, or maybe they're not particularly well themselves, and they've bundled their bags, and there's always people who just, you know.
Put their off work, aren't they?
Some of them are, yes. Yeah. But for people, we have essential staff.
Do you go to the microphone?
So we have essential staff working that who might get sick, you know, as well, and they're concerned. I mean, they're just, and employees are asking their managers. And I did get a.
Well, why wouldn't, if you had a sick person, why wouldn't you just send them home like we did the rest of the employees?
Well, that's what we just wanted to verify because yesterday was kind of specific to just sending them home as non-essential staff on paid leave. So I just wanted to know that, you know, that would also include anybody who's in a situation where they're maybe being quarantined, maybe, we've got people coming back from spring break if they're considered essential, but we can't let them come back for 14 days because the doctor said so, or they've been someplace. I mean, are we going to go ahead and just use the COVID code for them as well? I guess those are the questions.
I would, I would think so, yes.
I think if it's not COVID-related, we just follow our regular practices, but not everything, not every absence is going to be because of this. But if it is, then I think they just want to know.
We were going to review all this anyway in 14 days, weren't we?
Yep.
Right, yeah.
I'd say it's just like the ones that went home yesterday, other day.
All right, perfect.
Does that help?
That helps.
And we'll obviously keep monitoring what federal legislation might get enacted on this as well. Because there could even be a federal stimulus package that would include some financial support for that.
For state.
Yes. Yes. I'll hold my breath.
Yeah.
Do we have, is there anybody else from the board or, you know, has anything else? I mean, I'd say the audience, the gallery, who like to speak today.
We said we are going to continue meetings at 9:00 a.m.
Well, I think, I think given that we, what we've put in place right now, I can't think of why, of what would happen. I mean, obviously, you know, things happen, but I don't think it's necessary to meet tomorrow morning.
We can all call an emergency meeting if something changed drastically that took the full board to do that. So I think we're good until Monday or Tuesday. I think.
Yeah. I think that we're good for Tuesday. Maybe a little bit of discussion about how Tuesday, do any board members plan on calling in? I'm just thinking about how we arrange the room and be ready to accommodate if anybody from the public does come in while still having social distancing happening.
Oh, we got budget hearing, too, don't we?
Yeah, it's the budget hearing on Tuesday.
Do they have to physically be here for the budget?
James Perry, Finance Director, no, you don't. You don't have to be here. You can, you can call in.
And it doesn't take a super majority?
It does not take a super majority. So just flat majority. That was one thing that I was going to bring up and ask is how we wanted to do that, especially with the public, being that.
I thought we come to the conclusion that if they come to the door and say they're coming up to the budget hearing, pick them up, certain amount.
Yeah, right.
And then that's it. But I don't think that's going to be a problem, but at least we, that's what we're going to do. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And I also thought about, you know, possibly just roping this area off right in the lobby so they can't get further than this particular hallway, just to help mitigate.
Get out the elevator and come.
You're not going to go anywhere. If they're coming for the budget, they're coming here. They ain't going to be roaming the building.
Precautions.
So do most Supervisors, I mean, obviously, you can change your mind before then, plan on attending in person or anybody on the phone?
You know, to be honest with you, Chris, I'm going day-to-day on it. So I plan on being here Tuesday for the budget hearing, which I think is important, but it's really a day-to-day thing.
A couple could sit in our office and do the meeting. You know, if we're going to have space, we could do it from our office.
Because I think, I mean, this setup, I think, works right now. And so if we're.
We have more than 10 people.
And I don't expect, and I think that this is obviously out of the norm, you know, we're, I feel like we're going to pass the budget that we've done, so we're not going to make changes. I don't think anybody's planning on that right now. So I think that department heads and other elected officials don't necessarily need to be at Tuesdays.
We usually have very little attendance, and it looks like it's going to be even less.
Right.
If you could be less than one or two, due to the conditions.
Well, I would ask department heads to not come, but be available at their phone if we have questions.
Right.
That's after we chewed them out four years ago, or last year, for not coming.
Time's a joke.
Yes. And. And I know that.
You remember that, yeah.
I know that in particular, Kathy Nicholas is really good about giving updates every week, but I think for the timing, you can feel free to just do those to us by email. And if you wish, you don't have to be.
Or on the site, on the county site.